Hey.
Blue.
That's money for each one of those conferences.
Ohio State.
Ohio State? Wow, you guys backed in this year, didn't you?
Yeah.
Wow. I got a buddy of mine that lives twenty minutes from there. Huge Ohio State, man, I mean huge. And I sent him a text after the USC game. He never answered it. He called me someday. He said, I don't even want to talk about it. He said, after that Michigan game? Eight-point favorites and you got beat by how much?
Yeah, I don't answer him either, really.
Forty-two, twenty-two, what was that score? And you got beat last year.
Yeah.
And when Michigan beat Purdue? Forty-three to twenty-two? Outscored them twenty-nine to nine in the second half.
Yeah, they got a team. They're going to have their best.
What's that?
Georgia's going to handle them. I'm just saying.
Hey, you gotta win to get there.
That's right.
We're thirteen and oh, guess what? Ohio State is going to be thirteen and oh this year, or last year, or the year before.
What's the say, Michigan don't lose?
Oh, I see.
To TCU.
Big deal, so what?
At least we went there.
They went there, and they won the Big Ten again. Again.
And it's funny, for that game, I picked Michigan, he was going to pick Ohio State. We always bet, I never got paid for the last game.
Most times, it's a wash.
He still owes me a case of beer.
Alright, are you ready, Mike?
Yeah.
It's about seven thirty. Call this to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Roll call. Mr. Ziski.
Who is it?
Mr. Nichols.
Uh, here.
Jimmy Turner is excused, sick. Mr. Howard?
Here.
Amy Hirsch is excused, she's sick. Place Chairman Darlin?
Here.
Chairman Cable, here. Alright, um, let's talk about the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll support it.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Okay, the minutes. I admit it, the minutes we got this time were kind of a, I use the word anemic. I'm not sure who's taking them this time, Mike?
I will take.
Yeah. Cause I don't see Stephanie, and Amy's not here.
You have to give Mike credit for his notes for during the, uh,
Well.
the engineer planners, uh, comments and that, for your notes, because they lined right up with my notes for all the things I had taken.
That's what I was going to say, I mean minutes, but I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Was moved by Leroy. And seconded by Darryl Howard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
He had one in there, he took it out, and now he put another one in there. Is this, is this what you guys want, in that neighborhood over there?
No. I had, I don't know anything about it. There's, I, I mean, it obviously.
There, there's, there's a post, unfortunately, it's on its property.
He red-tagged one time.
Yeah.
How do you put another one in there?
It wa, it, only, because it was an eyesore, and he didn't put it in with any, uh, there was no permitting, but although it later became clear, it wasn't clear that it's property. It inconveniences the neighbors because of where it's placed, but it's not in violation.
Yeah, but he stood in the meeting outside here. Was talking to Roger Worstie, he said he's going to put that in, so I couldn't get my count right off. This is the kind of shit that's going to happen over there in residence? That ain't fair to me. I did nothing to the guy, nothing. I used to work for him. I never did nothing to him, I left him on his own.
I, I don't care if it's not, uh, Ag Industries, or somebody just digging a pond, or somebody doing whatever. That individual comes to the, the planning commission to get a permit, or, uh, to move forward, correct? And once he has fulfilled all the requirements in here, once he's fulfilled all the requirements in here, the planning commission, and commission doesn't go out there and red-tag something, or shut it down, that's up to the, the, the officer, the code enforcer. Is, is that correct? Is that not how that works? Now, if we've got a, uh, an issue with that, I'm sure the township board can certainly take that up with the, the individual or individuals that are supposed to be policing that. If that's being reported to that individual, and things aren't happening on it because he fulfilled his requirements, so what he had to do.
Two months, two months ago, some, actually went for a ride, and yeah. Could the contractor do a little better job at times? I suppose he could. But there was nothing that was actionable, he was within the letter of what his permit was. And so if he's not within the letter of that permit,
Hanging over on his property.
Okay, so it's not in your driveway.
No, it was a permit. He couldn't zigzag it, he couldn't zigzag it, he put it right there to where he knows we can't get through. But I'm just saying, this is the kind of stuff that we gotta live with over there? That, that ain't cool. I'm just bringing it to you guys' attention. This is the kind of guy that you guys are proving stuff for.
And the engineer. At length, again, everything that he's doing fits within the bounds of what was permitted under the project.
Well, it fits within the boundaries of what's in that ordinance.
Well, remember, we, we discussed the ordinance in here, you know, the, the, there were, happens within that, but the same ordinance, as we've discussed in here a couple times, several times, also says you can have a driveway within ten feet of a property line. It also says that a berm for screening can be placed within the setback to properly engineer a road permission to stockpile for the berm and the road.
Within that ordinance.
Within the ordinance, within the setbacks.
And you have consulted.
I've consulted with the engineer and the attorney on bo, on all these matters, including point by point, you know.
Right, because I, I know this.
Own various places.
It's mainly sand, cause it's blowing everywhere.
I just kind of carries the mission.
I was just saying.
And then, he was saying he's bringing.
I don't want to start.
I got four people up here, I can't even hear you.
Yeah, we need to get back there.
Well, I talked to the drain commission. Drain commission told, them roads were a frickin' mess. Now, if I wanted to live on a dirt, live down a dirt road. And, and that is the road commission? The road commission. That is, that is the one that issued that permit? Yes. They issued that permit? And the drain commission said that he was supposed to do it, because that was part of their process too. Yep. So both of them, why isn't this getting cleaned? That, I, that, I mean, that's on them. Maintain the roads, whatever part of the haul route you're using. And the Monroe County Road Commission are the ones that, uh, design and authorize you to use that as a haul route. We don't design, we don't authorize. So I should be calling them and complaining? Absolutely. Yep. They're, they are certainly the people.
But it's an extraction.
So even when they come in with these, uh, solar panels, they get to use more than twenty percent of the property too?
Amber Delk.
How's that something different?
Hey, nothing different.
Yeah, alright. Anybody else, is there any other citizens time?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to know from Mike exactly what township engineer said about using the general ordinance to take precedence.
Of, yeah, sorry.
And that's what it was done under, it was done under the previous, not the new one.
Right, right, right.
So there's no hundred-foot buffer on the, on the.
No, there is a hundred-foot buffer, but there's also a clause that says the driveway can be within ten feet of a property line.
It's not a driveway, it's a truck route.
Uh, a roadway driveway.
Which he was explicitly told he can't have trucks exiting off Oki Road by the road commission. That's who made him change the plans originally to enter and, and exiting off Plank Road.
No, that's not right. He was going to enter and exit off of Oki Road. The people that lived down at Oki Road came in here during the public hearing.
Hearing none will, move on to unfinished business. A general. Accepted by, and seconded by.
So this is what I, my notes right here. I give,
Seven forty-five.
Supervisor Turner, Turner's, I'll copy. These are all the points that I have jotted down that Kabisky had come up with. Um, and I know she sent out an email out.
To the attorney, and the attorney every time.
Yep, so, you know.
That was on, question.
That was, that wasn't on.
Look up, the condition of the issue, or something even. Part of it said that, um, the law has been set that if there's something missing in your zoning ordinance, it can be addressed as like a special use, or a contingency, or something like that. But, that was a couple of meetings ago. Anita had complained. From Centaun, which was basically the guts of the, um, master plan, which tells you the, uh, how many old people we have, how many, you know, these rates, that rates, and all that kind of stuff.
I printed everything, okay. And this is due to violence from Kerry Bondy, who's the attorney for the township. Penny, as for your question, master plan review has to be complete prior to the amending of the zoning ordinance to approve and overlay district. We want, we know what property is zoned ag one, ag and ag two currently, and what property in the master plans currently are for ag one, or have special use in particular districts. Our zoning ordinance provides, oh, two, that use, that are not specifically listed as a principal or permitted use, or otherwise determined to be similar to be listed use, are prohibited. So it does, it does appear to, accomplishment of a land use within a local unit of the government in the presence of a demonstrated need for that land use within either the local unit of government, or the surrounding areas within the state, unless a location within a local unit of government does not have an ordinance to the plant connection constituted on.
I guess that was my thinking it through, and I don't have that with me, and I can't find it out here. I, we should, we should get through one, and then go back, and the master plan is something that's been talked about several times.
Right, right. And, and you don't have any type of guideline.
Right.
Granted, you've worked through this thing about two years, you got pretty good.
Well, we've worked through it, and then we're going to undergo some change.
It's better to have it in the law, so it's enforceable.
So.
It's a little, it's possible to do a little bit of both. Not necessarily completely stop one or the other, just kind of.
Well, I think we should need to work on this.
Well, definitely.
And then, but.
We have to publish it, and it's a process, and dates, and times, and stuff.
Right.
Because you, on the master plan, you also have to contact all the surrounding, just list all these that might be affected by any zoning ordinance on their boundaries.
Right.
We're not necessarily concerned about, just on their boundaries. But in most cases, we, we're, in our township, we don't affect most of our rural township.
Okay.
So, that really, not going to affect anything.
Right.
Like, and this is building center, half of it's in our country, half of it's in Mexico.
Building itself.
Okay.
For the, the sake of conversation, because Mike did a good job of taking notes for what, uh, Kabisky had gone through. There's a couple of the things that, that Kabisky moved through, that I made note of, that we've already got in our ordinance. We've got, extensively, and so I was a little puzzled by some of his comments. But, uh, to some of the conversations that, that Darryl you had, Jimmy had, regarding for, uh, the, the, uh, green education about screening, uh, regarding concern about for have, also had, I wrote out at last month's meeting, wrote out for the amendments to address the concerns everybody had, so I actually printed them up, checked them out.
Room, and if we get to a number, we get to a number, then it's easy.
Number one, you want me to read them for everybody?
Sure.
Go one at a time.
Number one is require contractor letter of contingency credit to be held by the township against potential future expenses.
Ending, if you've got your existing ordinance, or if I've got land from,
Right.
that if you go to, uh, C two, that we will be deleting the words escrow of town.
Hang on, let's get there.
Okay.
What you said?
C two?
C two. C two?
I need to add C two.
I don't have a C two.
I don't either.
Yeah. And, well, if, under C, you would delete the word escrow account, and then we would add and change to require any revocable letter of credit listing the municipality as the authority.
And that would be this one. Green dates, July sixth, twenty twenty-two. Is everybody working off that one?
Yeah, this last one.
The green date is July sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Yep.
Yep, okay. On the same page as starting.
So we're going to, uh, uh, raise escrow.
Where does that end up, sorry?
Under C.
On page three, under C.
At the bottom.
Yeah.
It says we want to remain, you know, uh, get rid of the word escrow, and, and I remember.
Don't know what that is, because that was one of the things that was discussed.
The twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, the twenty-five thousand should come out of there, because we don't know how much that should be.
Hundreds of thousands.
Yeah, and it's going to be based off the scientific value of the.
And that's where the revocable letter of credit?
Yep.
Credit, at, and everywhere that says escrow then?
Yes.
So, you've got some verbiage that you penned.
Yep.
So, I, I'm going to write on the bottom of mine, I'm going to write language to be provided by Doug for future meeting. So, you can get the.
All kinds of personal things, if you ask, that's right.
Well, I think we're getting to the point that we should just all get these notes put in, and get a clean copy done, that we work with from there. Is there anything matter with that? We're doing good here, this is fine, but, but we are, we've been adding to this one since May sixteenth.
Yeah, actually, it's since two years.
Twenty twenty?
Right, right.
The amount?
Distribution of funds.
I know you guys wanted to cross out the amount, but should we just have like a?
Yeah.
So if you take that dollar amount out,
Yeah.
and you s, say there's no escrow, we don't talk about escrow, because that would be an amount.
Yeah.
They have to have a re, a re.
Letter of credit.
Letter of credit.
Taking out a home for a huge amount.
So that is our, at that point. He used that word several times the other night, and I had not ever thought of that, because I wouldn't have. I thought that was a good way to think it.
Yeah, I mean, certainly.
So then, we, we're not setting a dollar amount, that dollar amount, if nothing happens for ten years, and the prices double again, we're still covered, because that letter of credit is, those are performing to minimum agreed upon standards throughout the life, the project life.
That's on your B fourteen, I think.
Okay. Description of operational life proposed components. You know, it, it says, uh, a description of operational life, but we should add this somehow to say, um, you know, to let us know when there's a minimum energy output. I think the purpose of that was, was it gets below a min.
These people doing the panels, everyone's different, so.
I think they're putting a thirty-six-hundred acre one up, just all the people to the west of this.
It doesn't matter, it still depends on the product, it's what's different.
So, um,
So to me.
Do you feel that's the place to add that, is under B fourteen?
Well, it's.
Probably whatever, what their projected output is, and then what their actual output is.
Well, their projected, it's going to be when they create the contract.
Yeah.
That's it.
But in that yearly report, we're going to get an actual one of what it really is.
I think that's a good idea.
Makes no difference, because it's going to be, they're going to define that in the beginning.
Right.
Okay.
Well, if I project two hundred million kilowatts, and they come back with five million kilowatts, well, something's up.
And that projection can start changing each year.
So, so the note, Mike.
Year is going to be.
It, it actually doesn't say yearly, it says contract to include a minimum energy output guarantee clause.
But we did mention a year or so.
That's just a report.
Yeah.
So we could see the gradual decline of the project.
Basically how Ag Industries comes to us and is, you know.
Well, yeah, they'll be coming every year too, right?
Yeah, and with a report for what they're doing. And like, if we said they had to have a minimum amount of stone that they sold every year, if this slowdown lasts very long, stone sales are going to drop way off, and I'll say, gee, if they're below that target, does that mean they should be losing their permit? Or that we should be exercising something on them? It comes back to what the economy is, and what the profitability is, so just like, if we're talking about what the solar output on these panels are, it comes back to their profitability, that will determine, for us to put it in there, we're not electrical engineers, we're not solar experts, for us to be putting something in there that might be a caveat on how a business runs, you know, that's like.
But what if, if.
It would be nice to know what the output is.
Exactly what we do. We do put caveats at ordinances, to say how businesses run. That's what the planning commission does. A business, that's not our business. But our business is to put caveats on business, how they want to operate within the boundaries of our township. Because the people of this township is who we represent, not some company coming from Minnesota to take fifteen hundred.
And their lease would still be for another fifteen years.
Putting caveats in an ordinance. We put them in every other ordinance, every single one of them have caveats.
Alright, so are we saying we'd like to add the wording that Mike put together, something around two into fourteen, so that yearly we get a report back of what the output is? Alright. We want to add number? Into B fourteen?
We're going to get a projected output, we're going to get an actual output. The projected output before the actual output on.
Try to keep a video going.
Okay. Well, alright, on to number three. Right?
I didn't find anything for that.
I didn't find one anywhere else either, reading through that section, I obviously didn't just read the whole thing.
We just go to next one.
Established requirement for solar array physical components, that, that may be a, a Kabisky question, because he said he's licensed in Michigan and California. Maybe we can get some language from him.
That would go under E, and I wrote up the registered public engineer stamp on equipment and structural design. Project must be twenty fifteen Michigan building code. Public engineer must approve, the soil borings will structurally support the design of the collection array.
You got that under E?
Under E.
So, I'm going to write on my,
Right.
color coded ordinance, Doug, the supply language for January two, twenty twenty-three.
Doug. Let's go to the line from this. Move to. Okay. Number four, setbacks and easements.
H, right.
For the.
And that was my directions that I came back with.
So a hundred foot.
Whatever the extractions are, I mean, if it's a hundred foot, if it's three hundred foot, whatever it is.
We've already defined it in H, so you just have to look at that.
It's under H, yeah.
It's in H.
It says. See, under H right now, we've got it at one hundred.
A hundred feet from all, all spot lines, not participating.
There, that, that changed that back, that was from on the other side, not participating. So you want it? From all lines.
Okay.
Well, the only thing that, um, we discussed, if there is property lines between two participating properties. Now, that property line should stay clear.
That, that, yeah, there, that's.
So is that the hundred foot?
That's, there's a hundred-foot setback all the way around that, setbacks all the way around it, and there's no commingling like that.
One time you mentioned somewhere like five hundred foot setbacks.
Whatever, wherever it is, um, I know when we had discussion at the board, and I've got it written down here, that it's extraction. That's, that's what I got, and that's what I come back with two meetings ago.
You can't make that reasonable, because they'll throw it out.
Right.
You make something reasonable.
Whatever the extraction is.
What's the extraction?
Hundred foot. Hundred foot.
Total land mass.
Well, let's just keep.
I was just wondering if that would still be under the setback portion of it?
I've, I've got, I've got that too, from the board, what they wanted, and if it's not on here, we'll, we'll certainly add it to it.
Okay, guys, I'm sure you forget about that.
No, oh no, I didn't forget about it. Sitting right in front of me.
Alright. So number five. Are, are we on to five then?
Then owning that piece that's being set up.
All the cell phone towers, not leases, they own the property.
But, to me, I think that's covered one way. This one here, this person sets up a, uh, ray on my farm. Five years from now, they bought a business, nobody wants to pick it up. I think that the property owner needs to be involved with some sort of a document saying, we agree that this is going on in their property. And I'm almost on the opinion, but if they have, um, a debt, you know, they're got a mortgage on this property, whoever holds the mortgage, also feel, or of this project. Along with the insurance company.
Absolutely. I'm thinking it's probably.
Another thing can happen, what happens to these guys with a tornado concern. I mean, if these things start, just go over and start to break apart, now I have, um, chemical, I mean, inside dripping, having metals. And what's the cleanup for that? That has to be defined in here too. I mean, of those two things, I'm looking at the property owner, and so that's number five.
And, and the notes that I jotted down from Kabisky was, uh, and banks, insurance companies, and everybody else that you mentioned, they're going to have to be part of that as well.
Well, that's my point, is we should generate the documents, so we just don't bring the lease between John Doe and me.
Right.
And they have no teeth, and I don't know, they said one of the, so, uh, solar arrays were already sold three times already, to different owners, and of course, we're trying to cover that too. But how are we protecting the landowners, what you said? It had to be, you know.
Abandonment, discommission, uh, decommissioning, we covered, but we didn't cover, I do not see, start again. Well, A is purpose and intent and intent.
Now that's up the bill.
Right.
This is a unique situation, I guess, it shouldn't refer to a current and we should document it in this, probably what I would.
A lit. Right. We added it, we should add it in here some.
Yeah, I agree, it should be, I think that it still should be added in here, we can always do something separate, but the lease item would be added in with with their permanent process. But don't have nothing about the.
I'm looking for it, did you, where is something closer, part of it is not in here yet?
I never come. Document, I mean, that would be like a building permits.
At the end of the site plan, so you're saying it could be. I mean, that's after, after uh, after all, everything, the security measures, written descriptions, what we're adding in from number two, contract and minimum output.
Is under this section, so that would be a condition of special use to cover that stuff. Do you think that would fit in there? Because that's gonna be a condition for the special use. To check those boxes.
Right.
That's gonna have to be.
Those are low maintenance, the power limits. And I think by the time they stick the dumb reason, it might not be quite as long a time. You can put a word in the law.
Yeah.
I just thought it'd be put at the end of part of their.
Week and cover.
At least they're gonna be part of requirements, showing that the lease and basically, you know, some things were coming up to protect the farm, but it'd be a part of their requirements.
What about. Protecting them too.
Protecting everybody.
Can't just be protect somebody. Do you have that?
Leasholder and property owner right application to the life of the project, the lease standards. And we need to add, you you made a good point, I mean.
Sure, lease agreement between company and private property owner.
So where do you think the best place to add it is?
Yeah, you're going with making your own twenty standard because it really truly does not.
Oh, yeah, twenty, make twenty standard. Porter Smith and ending the other.
Language that what we're talking about is really between the property owner and the the company and making sure that template's right. And I don't know any property owners that can enter anything without having that thing gone through the client, including by attorney. There's a number of attorneys that are specializing in this now.
That they would be. What else was in there?
Uh, just the lease standards, lease holder, property owner, you know, so that'd be the company and and throughout the lifetime of the project.
Under insurance. Police, you know, lease agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah, lease.
Group of insurance protecting the property owner from liability.
Are we are we content on number five now? All right, number six. You know, to be property tax, ensure the contract provides for the coverage of all potential tax implications pursuant to the project to mitigate negative impacts of on all parties.
Is that as you're talking, yep. The company should be responsible for all personal property taxes and increase.
Well, it should be a separate, that should be a separate.
You want it to be twenty-one?
But that would be something that would be part of that, that would be part of that contractual law, that's part of that, that. Agreement between the property owner and the company, that would be something that every property owner is going to make sure that that's in there, that the personal property tax is on them. The any increase on the valuation because if it goes from ag to a commercial, it will have a different factor when the assessing is done each year. It has a different value when or where people were paying for properties, that's pushing the sales studies, which is pushing our state SEVs. That doesn't impact your state taxable values, that there's different things with the complexity. And so to make sure that the property owner, you're held harmless or they have increased that way.
So whether it's in in the same paragraph or sub paragraph of, I believe in twenty is.
Yeah, it it comes in there.
All right. We'll make a progress. Yeah. A fairly, uh, I thought. Comprehensive.
Reclamation.
Reclamation, I'm looking for it here. A Dan, it's P, abandonment and decommissioning. This may be something that we actually.
But shouldn't that also go with uh, with the number one that we were just talking about, yeah, number one? Under C, or fourteen C? Of the a letter of, or we're, oh, yeah.
When we were talking about the escrow account, it was.
So that 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 is, that is one and, one and seven to me are like the same and.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just gonna put C down for that in my mind.
Yep, there would be, because whatever, whatever you have to come up with the decommissioning, that's part of how you calculate the value of that letter of credit. That you make sure that there is enough in there to take care of that. Size and scope and everything about it, that's when you're gonna have to have an engineer that can be able to value that, you're gonna take what their information is, do comparables with other townships. Come up with what that value is to set with that. Township board, that's that's the letter of credit because it will vary from project to project, whether you're talking about solar, you're talking about any other business that you have to have an escrow. It varies depending on size and scope.
Maybe it's nothing, maybe it doesn't even go in there.
Okay, conditional clause to revert back to original zoning upon termination and recovery of the project. However, we cannot solicit for conditional zoning.
Yes, wait a minute, guys.
Yes, I remember him saying.
Yeah.
Berlin Township put it in their ordinance.
They did?
Which I don't agree with, I just wanted to let you know that Berlin.
Our engineer certainly didn't agree with it either.
Well.
Has anybody asked?
The state doesn't agree with it either.
Well, that's why I was curious, what does the Michigan Township Association?
But it didn't talk about that, so I got online and there is a MCL, I didn't write all that stuff down because season's fine, just a little verb and. I'm not supposed to solicit it, if somebody wants to do it, that's something different, and I just scanned into Berlin, so we got it in there, so.
Can we put it under the decondition and it needs to be?
No.
No.
Let me get the words.
We're not gonna.
No, we're not gonna touch that.
We're gonna just let it.
We we don't, we we're hung out on that, but if we do keep it with commercial and then they approach us as doing that contractual zoning that way. Then that's your, you're out and then more importantly is when they're done, it reverts back to ag, because if you rezone it, completely rezone it, like. Read through our zoning book for what is allowed under commercial, because just because they quit, the zoning doesn't revert, because that comes back to the property owner has to request that.
Right.
And it opens you up for a huge.
Guess what, I just rezoned my eighty acres to.
I don't know what to tell you, I I know what the the direction I got from the board is though.
I understand, I mean, we're telling you what the what the ordinance says.
All right, lifecycle costs. Number nine. Possible planning and obligation cost should be back into the product, project on a holistic basis to address foreseen and reasonable contingency costs. For managing every phrase of the project.
Credit. Otherwise, it's it's about what the cost is for the township, if we're gonna have a biannual inspection by an arborist of the the screening and then go to an annual inspection. If you're gonna have the inspector out there once a month or whatever the situation is or the planner, all those costs, we gotta calculate those in. And I I thought that's what he was implying, I don't like, is that, am I paraphrasing?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you're right.
What our holistic, what is our cost?
What's our cost gonna be if we send somebody out there once a year to inspect or once every six months to?
Yeah, and also part of the the building process, each time the the building official goes out there and checks each hole or whatever that he needs to be done and all that cost is actually covered under that letter of credit, I believe.
That portion they would be paying each time, that's part of their permit.
That's part of the permit for them to do that.
That's part of their construction permit.
Yeah.
That's different, where the letter of credit is more so regarding for the reclamation destruction, let's say they walk away from what is our expenses they have.
I don't think.
But what you're, the the holistic cost, I I viewed it as that they give an estimate to us. And we have to have the the inspectors out, the engineers out, everybody and their brother out, what's that total value, what that total cost is, they're going to have to pay that. But it gives us an idea of what you're gonna have to have for the the red.
Does that still get tied 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 into the letter of credit to make sure that they are covered, that they actually do?
Going and exercising for distribution on a letter of credit, you've got a much bigger problem, the thing isn't even off the ground.
Yeah, but my, you know, I mean, my my theory is, is say they decide they wanna work on this big project, they may not get any holes in the ground or anything like that, but. The township still could have tens if not hundreds of thousands of dollars tied up and, you know, engineer fees, lawyer fees, whatever, and then they say. Thing going and.
They gotta pay that when they do the permits. If they don't pay cash for the permit, they don't have a project, they can't do it unless they have paid for it.
Yes, no, I agree with that, and that's what this is though, right? But I was saying, what what, so they will bring that forward before we ever spend a dollar then, correct?
Yeah, we we wouldn't be.
Duck that down and if we run out of money, they have to fill it back up.
That's right.
No, I agree, but what, well, how do we know what that number is?
So I think this was.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I say, what what covers that number though?
So maybe it goes back to, like Doug said, that that letter of credit. Is that not?
Well, oh, wait a minute, there is another piece in here dealing with the maintenance program, with that part of the maintenance program. And have it not a letter of credit, but more of an escrow account for the maintenance piece of it. Because now you're going after a different uh, thing, maintenance is is under thirteen.
No, that that goes back on them, they're the ones that are managing their array, they're the ones that have to maintain and manage it and repair it. It's not the municipality's responsibility, don't don't, like I say, don't get into the management of this thing, we're in the oversight to make sure that the the property owners and the community is protected. When it comes to, you know, like if they got a panel that's broken or disarray, that's their responsibility to fix, it's not the township. Nor are we got the expertise to know, gee, this one's gotten deficient because it's got a short in it or whatever, you know, so getting. On this, because we do have a pretty good guideline for the maintenance and repair that really talks about, you know, for the safety and hazard. Uh, that if anything that could be of a hazardous material or anything that could be a heavy metal, et cetera, that's in that situation or down power lines or buried power line.
Look, to me, then wouldn't maintenance and repair be considered after the fact and wouldn't this be more before the fact, like?
Life cycle.
Well, I guess life cycle, that's.
It's like white.
I guess, yeah, I guess you're right there. I was just reading somewhere though about the permit.
All right, let's go on to nine.
Sorry, I guess I must uh.
That's okay.
Put it somewhere else.
On nine eight, soil restoration.
We get that under the reclamation.
I was gonna say, I thought we did pretty good on that.
Actually, we've got other townships that mimic our soil testing requirements.
This is one such course that should be planned for the need, if any, to at minimum restore the soil to. And I know we did that because we talked about even going back and having soil test code prior to and after, so that they leave it for the landowner in the manner with which theoretically it was found.
That's under P.
It's under P. Got it.
I didn't think PA one sixteen had anything to do with the taxation of the property.
It doesn't.
It really doesn't, it doesn't at all.
And the tax. The tax defer is just if you.
It doesn't matter, it falls under that commercial anyway.
No.
There's no commercial once, PA one sixteen, is there?
No. But if if it's a contract rezoning. It's paused, and so if it didn't come back out, it would still be under, they would still have that that tax liability if they've been receiving any of the deferment on it. But as for a tax exposure to the township, there is none because everybody is paying in on that, that reimbursement comes back from the state, from the general fund.
Is this um?
On our properties, and if you go back to prior to PA one, prior to proposal A, which got passed, but wasn't back in ninety-three. Which then blew the the funding of the schools off, that's why you see that on your homestead, when your property taxes, when everybody got their bills last week and you saw. School operating eighteen mills and it says exempt this because of proposal A, the other caveat that that put in. The the increases on your property values, because we're all taxed on hypothetical capital gain. The other situation is, let's say you had two properties identical, they had two houses built identical, they both sold for a hundred thousand dollars back in ninety-five. They will be taxed the same and then let the person that paid the half million, he just set the value, he will be taxed off of the half million, that's where you get that differential unlike properties.
Right, okay. Now, we've already went over this taxes on this about. Different ways, I just say that. The way that the board is basically stating it, that it's not going to be allowed on PA one sixteen, so all this means nothing, it should just say exempt from PA one sixteen property somewhere here, they already said it's not gonna go on.
I I don't think I am, but correct me if I am, PA one sixteen was designed as the preservation of farmland.
Yes.
That's, I mean, that's what it was designed for and.
Farmland open space.
Solar, it's not farmland. That's not what PA one sixteen was designed for, it was the design for the preservation of farmland, that's what it was designed for. I I I find it very hard for myself to be able to connect the dots from a solar panel to a, the governor's not writing this ordinance.
No, no.
I don't care what she says.
She's an idiot.
I don't care.
What do you have?
You know, I didn't see a Whitmer sign. I don't know why we're gonna hang our hat on that.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, this is what the rules and what the law is, if I get on the expressway and it says seventy miles an hour, I'm supposed to drive seventy, I may not, but that's the rule.
No, the rules say you may do that, that's not the road, it's a whole nother thing, that's a whole nother, but local government.
But.
I just wanna, I wanna see the words inside here on the disclaimer that we are not allowing under PA one sixteen, because that's what the board has already clarified, it doesn't matter if you can get more money for taxes, I don't really care. It needs to be exempt from your building.
Well, I suppose you could put that in there, and if the person really wants to, they could.
If you're curious on what PA one sixteen looks like, it just happened to have one that's recorded with the registered deeds.
I I I don't care what it looks like, I, all I stated was PA one sixteen was designed for the preservation of farmland. That's what it was designed for, it wasn't designed for the preservation of solar panels, that's my point. It's not designed for the preservation of solar panels.
Where are you?
Or moon rocks or skyscrapers, it was designed for farmland.
Okay. When you go back to A. And if you're going to.
Two hundred dollars, two thousand dollars, you still go in, so it doesn't matter if you turn.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So if that's, if that's what you wanna do.
If you went to the contractual zoning, that gives you just one more caveat for an enticement, then it might come back into ag.
Well, I'm in nature to go back to whatever, I'm just saying it should be, they should not be allowed to use something like you said, and we don't need to go over again, but basically what Barry was saying. I mean, after the fact, they go back to it if they want. Keep it under.
So, so, here, whatever else you wanna classify that as, other than commercial or industrial, like the direction I got from the board, and we do that, and that solar panel. That solar array company, whoever they are, this is, we don't care what you think, we're gonna do what we want to. We're gonna do what we want to as a solar company and we're gonna cram this down your throat. Is that what you're telling me is okay in this township, because that's what I just heard. Because that's what I just heard. I don't think it is.
I'm trying to figure.
Well, where I'm going is if we put in here commercial. And you guys are, well, they can just write a check for a couple thousand dollars and they can do whatever they want to. So that's.
Not necessarily. That's not the way that I.
That's what I hear. That's that's exactly what I hear.
We said if it's going to get made in culture.
Included in with that. That right there is included in with that.
Darren, I think the question about it is, we can't say that they can't go on industrial or commercial. So either way, they take out and they have to pay more. And that's what we were getting at. Well, Lisa, I was thinking. Yeah, because they're not gonna be able to get under PA one sixteen, so they're gonna have to put it under commercial. That's what route we decided, which we got going.
Tell me that a township doesn't have any power to allow anything to go on in in the township, the planning commission or the board?
I think that we can make it difficult enough where they're not gonna make much money.
That's not what I ask you. Ask you, do you think that it's possible that the township planning commission or the township board doesn't have any power? When it comes to being able to put together an ordinance to either allow or not allow whatever to come in to a township?
Well, if that is the case, why?
Turn on Ag One then. Open one up on, I don't know, on Palmer Road. On 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 Palmer Road, right there on Palmer in this vacant barn across from a residential house. You know what I mean? What is the difference? What's the difference? If I can do whatever I want to, what deters me from doing that? I don't believe that.
We worked that over pretty good.
No idea if we'll all go on the.
I'm outside if we do that.
That's what I said. I said, if you're gonna change it, it's been talked about for months, just change it. Go back to A one, large solar energy system. Now, the need becomes mute.
And then I'm just saying some sort of.
So wait a minute.
If you do this commercial, you have stuff by the industrial. Sure, we don't have anything.
Well, we already had A one consummate.
You delete all the others and say, I'm I'm concerned about saying industrial.
We don't have anything industrial.
We do.
You gotta go with that.
Okay.
Does that?
Commercial.
What what are we gonna label that as? One or?
It it is one under purpose beyond A. Purpose of purpose intent. Go down there, number one.
All right, we got that.
All right.
So what about in the beginning up here?
You take out the ag and the ag one, ag two, and you insert commercial. All right, look at one down.
It is a. Okay, so we're on to ten. Reflected in master plan. This all large scale project need to be included in the master plan development. Discussion that we can go ahead and we will get to the master plan, you know, hopefully shortly. Six. So we're gonna add this to number twenty eleven, but it's added to twenty. To B twenty. Five and six. Twelve, drain and road commission review.
You've got that already included.
I just, yeah, some of this I thought. I mean, he was making good notes. Just make sure you have.
Yeah.
And there's a few of these that we did.
Like I said, there was a few things that that David said that.
Saying here's been changed so many times, I can see how they lost track of that.
You have seven eleven?
Which twelve.
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 Drain, drain road commission review. Where are you gonna put that?
I thought.
Or do we got it?
Yeah.
Under the eleven?
We've already speaks to, uh. Yeah. So right, access all driveways in that. Eleven is the one that has the driveway. Uh, it says all access driveways and entrance shall be subject to the Monroe County Road Commission approval and shall be planned so to minimize the use of land for that purpose.
Right.
And drain tile mitigation plan. The reclamation plan will include drainage mitigation. Construction will not impact neighboring properties drainage. And and also nor actually they can't drain. You know, like their water was gonna shed off to another property. You can't legally do that under the drain road anyway.
But.
Anyhow.
One one thing that.
Drain.
Yeah. So we can add.
Yeah, we can add that here.
Under eighteen.
For the drain commission, uh, reviewed by drain commission. Or how do you wanna?
Plans reviewed by Monroe County Drain Commission.
Now, my understanding is that they don't go dig holes. I think they're just going and drive.
They are.
Pile lines down.
They're just pounding them down. They're only fifteen, twenty feet down.
You said there was going twenty feet downers?
Yeah, I don't know what the exact distance is. It depends on the soil type. But for what their structural is that from what I understand, a number of these newer arrays, and they go in, they're not concrete and they're simply pounding, you know, whether it's an.
Driving in.
Pipes, whatever it is, that pylon goes, no.
Right.
And you should stay in there if there is pounding created by this project that they have to to, um.
Well, it was in there at the end of reclamation.
Drain tile mitigation.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, we did.
Well, well, I build it, okay?
You know, but in unintentionally or intentionally, then it comes back that they have to repair it. And that's the same way for what you're going to do with this. That if a tile is broken, it may be impacting, and not know it for a year. That's a situation up on, uh. If you look on Mylan Oakville Road, Emmerica Road, on that one property there, it's got a pond half the time. That used to be well drained ground. Until the property next door, in the richest property, put in all those homes and you cut all the tile that transfers that property. And that's what did that do maintain.
Yeah, but that's why it says it here, different properties.
Right. Drains, do maintain. Drain, drain, drain mitigation.
Well.
Destruction. Not in or not.
Panels aren't as big as they used to. I mean, originally when the company talked about how these would be twenty feet long, now they're like a ten or eleven, which means they're only like. And 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 that like that big farm between. You got a bird inside? We spent thirty two thousand on a sign, but we can't get speakers.
Got a bird though.
All right. So the additional note at the bottom was prairie grasses, pollinator growth and other, and another measure should be considered to optimize soil in conjunction with the project. As part as the. Part of the project.
Part of the green, the trans Greening, um, well, let me back up.
In the case it was along the. I'll sorry, didn't have anything on the inside because, you know, yourself got it right. We. Quick and mayor's tail and all that crap.
We can add a number six under the screening under J that. Uh, prairie grasses, pollinators and other measures should be considered to minimize soil. Should minimize soil.
Pollinator growth we want add to be considered to optimize the soil in the within the project.
I can write that one up.
Actually, it should be number five, and number five should become number six, though. Cause I'm looking at this number five here says failure to install or continuously mainstream. Maintain required vegetation still constitute violation instruments and special use may be revocated, revoked. So if you made that number six and put your prairie grasses and added ahead of that.
See, what make.
Would be would be my.
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
Yep.
That make sense? We make.
The discussion that went on at length regarding the the screening in that, uh, I wrote down under, I had a J six. That, uh, you make that J six, five, make the new part that you just talked about for under the the array as six and then. As seven and then five will become eight. But this is what I suggested for under J six. Add the words require, and that way, cause I was concerned about the the, if you had, uh, what we put down, we took out that sixty percent. And it says all unhealthy, uh, or and dead material shall be. By the applicant within one year or the next appropriate planting, uh, period, whichever occurs first. With light vegetation of equal height and existing plants.
Right, we had that up here in in two.
Yeah, we added that in there already. But I was just reading.
This is in a sixth, and that failure to install continues would constitute violation be seven. That would be the last one.
Yep.
Oh, what what kind is there? What kind of?
We can revoke their special use permit. And that would be if Mike comes to us and says, this is their violation, right?
What other violations?
When they come back, I mean.
They just refuse to do anything with their way. We can buy them daily or what?
Well, then that that would come back to the the township attorney for sort of violating, because we've got the clause, whether it's a criminal violation or if it's a civil infraction. I don't remember which one we get. We had that danced too many times.
Township does no unit.
Yeah, yeah, we we won't get in that. But either way, the county attorney has the authority to give them notice and take it to court or levy fines. Because they've got something that are already in the ordinance that way. So there we've got, read our ordinance book.
Oh, I know.
Pick up our ordinance book and read through it. There's a lot of stuff.
You should know when it comes to that, just like you just said. I just wondering if there was a way.
I can find it. We talked about that too in previous. So this becomes five, J five. This becomes J six. Failure to install becomes the last one at J seven. That's where I am. So can you type H three into any of those?
H.
Three, yeah, read that real quick.
Okay. H three is evergreen.
Oh.
At at this point, we changed that from fifty foot. We made more for that.
Hundred foot, they got money.
Okay.
And and the closer the screening is to the perimeter, when you're looking at vertical, it 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 heights it even greater. Cause riding along back here a couple of weeks ago up by Lanting, there probably a two hundred acre solar farm up there on the west side of. I had never noticed. Apparently you've been there a while.
Yeah, they power machine state.
Oh, no, 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 this is. Actually.
So I mean, we went over the majority of it, but.
All the buildings in Detroit, now we're gonna have to worry about this.
In one spot, the one thing we.
That's right. I got it. I got an asterisk there. That would be under I, lot coverage. Where it says a large solar energy system is exempt from any maximum lot coverage limitations. The direction of the board was twenty percent land mass max. So if you got a hundred acres, you get twenty acres. That's what you get. That's the direction of the board.
If you have to zone the whole hundred acres.
However, you gotta do it.
Well.
However, you gotta do it. That's twenty twenty percent land mass. That's what.
Where was that?
I.
That says eighty percent commercial, I can do something else with it. Commercial, I can do something else.
There you have it.
Oh, yeah. So you said. You said you'd allow do whatever that we can do whatever. How do we put that in here?
Does he become the owner of that now? Is he on that lease agreement then? Is that part of the solar company then?
I'm just saying.
No, I'm asking the question, is he gonna be the owner of those solar panels if he's gonna do that, any individual? Because the solar company is gonna go into a lease agreement with the landowner. So is the solar company now gonna become?
Not the property owner.
It's not the property owner.
No.
That's the property.
No, it's not.
No, they're only gonna. Well, I mean, that the lease is, that means like.
They're, it doesn't matter if they pay the lease on it or not. That's gonna be in that lease agreement. That's gonna be part of the special use. Get your twenty percent of that total land mass, you'll get your twenty percent of that. That solar company is gonna be the leasie on that. So if 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 you if you lease a five hundred acre farm, if you lease that five hundred acre farm and fifty acre go.
Okay, and now back to it, then if you can lease out the farm, the woods for other, you can make more money off the woods.
That's that's. That's right. That's part of the special use and that's we include that.
Mister Chairman, I would move that we request the township attorney review the twenty percent bulk requirement. Because and the reason why I'm asking this is because if this is outside what would be considered normal for these kind of projects, we will lose in court. And so I.
I mean, so I get it.
I know, but the board has asked, and the board hasn't read some of our ordinance system.
I've been told.
I'm I'm good.
But it's it's very inefficient use of land.
Yeah, I'm I'm, that's why I'm asking, have the attorney review if twenty percent.
I'm asking.
You can go to eighty percent.
I didn't say, I said what's a pond.
And ponds are usually going on less than five acres or less than ten acres.
What's a pond land mass?
Right.
What is it?
Because you wanna put a house.
What is it?
All right. Now we're talking apples, oranges and grapes?
No, I'm just asking you what.
I'm gonna say, we're talking, we're talking about solar right now. Cause if it does go to court, then it opens up for a lot of other issues.
Jimmy said.
Then the town then the township assurance gets involved and they say that's.
And like I said, if I've got an entity that's gonna come in here and policy it up my ass and they wanna be a good neighbor in my township. I got an issue with that. I I'm just telling you.
I'm just saying, we're talking about the ordinance right now, and I say, I'm asking for the twenty percent.
And I would beg you, the majority of this township would have an issue with that as well. Just saying, just saying. I will take that back to the board though.
I made a little motion that there was a board, you have called it that way.
Are you gonna take care of that or you want me to take it to the board?
You should have it anyways. Yes. Um, so Doug made a motion to take that back to the board, to take that to the attorney, to ask the board to take it to the attorney about the twenty percent. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll support it.
Leroy will support that. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for it go back to the for the, uh, the board to ask the attorney. If the usage for, uh, if twenty percent usage for a special use is acceptable or if it opens us up to issues. Motion in support. All in favor of this going back to the board and the attorney say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion is carried. Do you know she?
No, I'm gonna give a screen, let you read it. You can tell me if that's gonna get us to where we need to go.
Yes, it has an accessory. Would would open the township up.
That's why.
Yeah.
We'll take the township to court.
Right.
That's that.
Right, Bill.
The bottom line is, I don't want anything we do that opens up the opportunity or caveat that they could go to court. Because once they go to court, then they start picking nitpicking at stuff. So yes, twenty percent land mass, the attorney has to be successful. All right. That the township could be to court.
Well, this is this is my my issue with all this, Doug, is.
Question.
Yeah.
Right. If we were to do that, does it put us in a situation where we are very likely to be? That's the that's what we're trying.
And here's.
Because if you move, they get to do anything they want to at that point.
Right.
Because that's important to them now.
Well, here's my issue with all of that, Leroy. And it is, you've got an entity that lives, if you wanna be a good neighbor. And we put together a solar. and we put together a solar ordinance, and they don't like what we put together, so they're gonna take us to court and sue us. To me, that's not- You know what I mean? That's not, don't ask to do business with me, and then take me to court, because you don't like the answer I give you.
And they can still take us to court, even if we do, whatever percent, that means nothing.
I was just saying, if they take us to court, I don't wanna lose.
Everybody does.
Well, I'll tell you, twenty percent is in excess of what they want. And that's a fact. For every person that I talked to that would want it, I talked to a hundred that didn't. I'm just saying.
Saying, "You did that."
Yeah, and how's that going to an island?
Um, we'll figure that out tomorrow and Thursday. What's our new camera, our new supervisor? All right.
You guys got a new one there?
So, we kinda rolled unfinished business and new business together. Is that all right with everybody?
Yep.
Is there anything else we wanna cover, or any new business? So, all right, second citizen's time.
Would your more time expire for this, for the solar?
It did, yeah, they got renewed, I think.
What's that expiration on it?
Uh, I think it went six more months.
Yeah, and it was like, it's, was it November?
Yeah.
So, so it'll be May.
May? Positive?
Don't hold me to it, but somewhere in the end.
All right.
Like? Anything else?
Got a couple things. First of all, before this pond even started over there, I come on, wasn't sent a letter from the township about that pond over there. There's like four neighbors that I know of, and I notified. And I blame Ron Youngblood for it.
Oh.
And furthermore, Ron Youngblood and Lisa Moore signed off on four ponds in this township, you guys aware of that?
Yep. We've got many problems here that were signed off from before the people that are in place now, and there's nothing we can go back and do about it. All we can do is if our zoning administrator finds something that is not within the bounds of the ordinance, he- it is beyond us, apologize.
No, I was just bringing it up.
And you mentioned a name just a few minutes ago, that just about makes my blood boil, cause he caused more issues. He made more work for us-
You wasted more time than I did.
On many, maybe-
He got away with it, you know?
Because he apparent- All we can do is go forward from here.
Looking for them? I, I wasn't looking for them. I remember, in November.
Is there any other citizens' comments? All righty, commissioner comments. Leroy, anything you'd like to add?
Well, we've talked twelve minutes, so we'll leave it at that. I, well, I have a problem that, that-
I did think Anita was working on that a couple months ago, you're still not finding her, cause I have not went up for her.
Well, no, uh, the, if you, it should be on the website, I would assume.
Absolutely.
And, uh, but the ones that are on the website aren't, isn't correct either. So, I, I just totally got frustrated, we're working on this thing for two years, and still, it seems like we talked to somebody, and, um, well, it's their responsibility, and, you know, I guess, the township board needs to point out the responsibilities of, who's supposed to take care of this and fix it. So, that's my complaint, because for Mike, he can't even do his job that, as good as he does with the way he has to go out doing his business. So, it's embarrassing to them.
Fair enough. For Mike to be full time.
I recall that we, I, I really do feel we should be sending letters out, whenever, whenever we're going extractions, especially extractions, and it should be-
It's a law, it's a law, it should be done.
Was here, you were here.
No, I was not.
Public hearing.
I was not here.
Well, you've been here several times, I guess I thought you were.
Right. But, I've, I've been here taking notes, because this, what he just said, nothing's getting done. And why?
All right. Mr. Daryl, anything you'd like to add?
Nope. Nope, other than, you know, report back to you folks. Bit discussion, pushing to adjourn.
I'm not done yet.
Okay.
I'll ask for a reason, okay?
It lacked, it lacked a second.
I'll ask you, whatever happens with that question, cause I know you're ready. I, I- This morning?
Yeah.
And they were pretty anemic, we need some detail on what's going on.
And that's what, how I felt about it originally too, is that, you know, cause I've actually been doing the minutes for several months.
Right.
Now, all the previous ones that I've done have, you know, the discussions, everything like that. But the notes that I got on, on memo from Penny said that, uh, workshop they attended, they don't want any discussion or anything else. They said, "Just the motions, um, who approved it, who seconded it, just like straight to the facts on that, so."
That is most-
I heard that said as well, I think about it.
Actually, what she just said is actually correct, under parliamentary procedure, because we had no motions, we just had a great deal of discussion. She recorded the motions, which is all that is required under parliamentary procedure, which municipalities operate under. So, she didn't violate anything, it's just that we got used to Anita or me with a ton of detail, and then like, Mike, you did a ton of detail, grateful for that. And that's what we were used to, but not necessarily faulting you, it's what we're accustomed to.
Right.
Is more of the discussion, you know, like-
The previous ones, you know, I did put all the info in there, and then I received like the notes on how to actually do it, and I was like, okay.
Yeah, that, that was a specific direction she got, was to parent way.
Well, I appreciate you, I appreciate you telling me that, cause I'm looking at that thing. Well, e- even if you're just doing what, what we got this time, we would like to have it within, theoretically, I was always told, we were supposed to have it within a week.
Right.
And Daryl, we should have that, so that Daryl has it a week from tonight to take to his board. That's where, that's why this is kind of a time thing, and, and so-
And that's what I said, I sent, like, the email this morning, I said I had some, you know, technical difficulties and stuff.
Okay.
In the right format, you didn't send it, but- Yep, you'll have them within five days.
Yep.
No?
Get, get them to us, you know, Monday morning at the latest, so that we can print them off for Daryl.
Well, at least somebody's got some time to at least go over them, because they will be in draft form then.
Yeah, they'll be drafted till we approve.
That's right.
Daryl, Daryl, Daryl already, motion, so I'm looking for a second now. Where's my, Leroy? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Thanks for coming, people.